And we try to keep you informed every time we make a, you know, a different approach to something. Provider is gonna be our problem. Getting someone to move to this area that isn't empty and willing to stay and willing to serve this area. So, we're probably gonna have to use rural help. I'll just rural help to get somebody.
Right.
Be the only way. Any other questions?
Okay. I'm sorry to interrupt you back there. I apologize.
I just walked back in. One of them called me thinking, said, "Get back here."
All right. Do we have any other questions for Mr. Director here? All right, Kay, do you want to have action on this tonight?
I think timeframe is critical here.
Okay, do we have this informal motion then?
I like the motion we look forward with. Electronic ability of getting it.
Okay. We have a motion. We have a second?
I have a motion.
Okay. We have a second?
Change.
Okay. Any discussion? Further questions? All printed, signed, motion carries. Thank you very much, Lisa. At this time, we'd like to recognize anybody for public comment.
No, it's not. We have a comment.
Special public comment. This time, I'd like to recognize the county manager, Mr. Cable, who'll go through these discussion items.
All right. A lot of this information here tonight is some stuff that you guys have gone over and have reviewed. It's basically bringing up the date. First update is I'm done with the county of construction course in Chapel Hill, so...
Congratulations.
I don't have to be there.
Congratulations Friday, of course, they will be there.
I apologize. Traveling Chapel Hill a week out of the month, like I have been for the last eight, so...
Did you get something to hang on the wall?
Yes, sir.
Good. I want to see.
I'm more vacation. Yeah, it was part of the vacation.
I'm pretty sure you're calling here tomorrow.
Yeah. I guarantee it. Personal discussion items is a request for Relay to Life for possible funding. They have different tiers of requests, whether it be from in-kind, all the way up to presenting sponsor, which would be a $3,000 commitment. This information opinion, I got some over the last couple of weeks, and they want to present to the board of commissioners for your consideration.
Okay. What would then the, what would you...
You can do 500, 1,000, 2,000, I pay for it.
Yes, they go with incomes from in-kind sponsor where you just commit staff personnel to $100, to $250, to 500, 1,000, 2,000, and then 3,000. I asked Kim, I did not recall what we had did last year, and we did not, I think we committed some personnel...
We did contribute initially from last year.
Over there.
Because we did not find the cashers and the bleachers.
Yeah, we moved all that. We did, we did, we applied personnel. Go over there, help out $1,000. Whether it be bleachers or, you know, whatever they needed.
All right, so we look for some of the in-kind, and we have two days?
Yeah, this is what our budget is, so they were just asking for a monetary donation this time, but we always do the in-kind anyway.
Okay, they take the boys, two or three days. So, I think, uh, that one, right there.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
All right, we'll be bringing that up, I think, uh, okay. Go ahead.
Uh, next is, Kim has got the upcoming proposal number Horizon Wireless for next year. It actually went down, it's roughly for all county homes and lots that we have, a little over $18,000 a year. Kim, do we need action on this, or is it...
Yeah, I will, because it's over our threshold.
Okay, right. And obviously Verizon Wireless has got the most comprehensive coverage in our, here. And so, we're in that situation, but, so that'll be coming up for action.
Is there any other children here? There's not any.
His lots is he from one year, each, each year.
So, we don't have to option any the other way?
No.
Great, fine.
I thought about hanging oysters upside down for tails. I forgive you, I'm sorry.
All right.
You don't have the animal rights people in the deposit.
They're still alive. How popularly, sir? Excuse me, Mr. Cable.
That's all right. Next, the senior center, the site change order, which was done by Paul on March 21st, 2013. That call was unanimous in action items, so we'll need to get the board for the approval of the call for the, for the senior center. And next on the list is, we got a request from North Carolina Wildlife Resources Commission addressed to Mr. Wiggs for, Kim gets this, for the beaver management program. They're requesting a total of $4,000, and they were wanting the board to consider this, so we're going to see if the board will...
All right, now, we saving or taking the beavers out?
No.
You know, my baby's alive.
You know, whenever, I started with the county roughly a year ago, and I can remember standing up here at one of my first meetings, and this was the first letter that I had to present to the board, and I thought it was, it was the same reaction.
You know, I really, I really didn't want to understand it. I mean, only thing that I've seen of beaver management in Grand County that I know of was overall wolf creep. They have to pull it out.
Yes, and this way, again. Anyway, that's what we're asking the Wildlife Resource Commission to see if we, Grand County will be willing to contribute to the action. Yes, sir, yes, sir, that'll be an action item.
Actually, I did not put it in action, because I didn't want, I didn't want the decision was.
We'll take it, we'll put it in action because of cable fight.
Yeah. Next is senior mill through June 30th, 2013. The projections that we have, cost overruns, Kevin, if I'm saying is right.
This is for the people that can go in past the allotments that she now has, and I think the quote is for an extra 65 days, which we're a little bit under that now.
Yes, and so, you're looking at less than $12,600.
Okay, with that, we had the, we had discussion about this last in coordination, and we were wanting for those who actually qualify, was anything done? And this is what it comes to?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Monica.
All right, next on the list is one to inform the board. We had our Grand County sign recently was rebuilt after the truck had an accident around over it. The sign that we put up, the Wood Clark sign, was stolen.
The top?
The top. And...
Steve, you got it for that?
I would split. It's wood.
Yeah, it's wood. So, what?
Okay. It's just gone.
When did this happen?
I don't have a date in front of me. I mean, Saturday sharp, ten on a Friday, informing that it was, it was done, I want to say it was about three weeks ago, on Friday. What we did was, we ordered a metal sign for $500.
What is it, Wood Clark?
The other sign. I have not seen the new sign.
If, this is what it all looks like.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's comparable to the...
It could compare with the last deal.
And the wood sign would be about $2,500 or plus.
Did you see it?
Who'd buy that wood sign?
The people in White's bill.
It takes, it wasn't wood, it was high density plastic. They originally were redwood, but you can't get them now, redwood, so we identity, which was still $2,200, so they stole, like stole black. That's suggesting the problem, because if you're gonna get paid potentially $100, I know it's a medical, but it's taken away.
They sandblasted wood signs, make it out there. What you, what I suggest to do if you don't want to steal it, get you a big rock, have them sandblasted in there. They can't carry that rock off. Oh, you give us a rock.
Yeah, I mean...
Sounds good.
Very good. All right, let's continue, folks, please.
Next on the discussion items is update the board of commissioners. The Board of Health needs permission from the Board of Commissioners to take over the Hilltop Advisor Board. And I think Lisa's still here, she can probably, a lot of members from the Hilltop Advisor Board, it was tough to get a quorum, a lot of times, is my understanding, and so, the, the Board of Health is considered taking over the functions of the individual Hilltop Advisor Board, they just need approval from the Board of Commissioners to do so. That will be an action items. Next, discussion items, I have this here, possible resolution to defend the right to keep and bear arms of Second Amendment to the U.S. Constitution. I have not seen this.
Yes, that, they disapprove of the state and senate, I mean, the senate and the house, so that's not going to be allowed.
Okay. Let's write that out. Also, we got a letter a couple of weeks ago, the Area Corridor K Coalition is requesting monetary backing. They do not say how much to help them push their, their coalition forward with, with the road. But I do not have any information as far as how much they are, they're asking for.
I'd like to make comment to that, if I could, please. I, I got a letter myself, as a member of the board, I think all of us did. The Corridor K Coalition is representative, and they have gone to nonprofit status, I do understand, and I've already told folks my stance on that personally, but to go and commit taxpayer dollars, taxpayers in our county who may oppose that, you know, we have to be, I know, I have to be very careful about it. I've been vocal in how I feel about it, I know that other members of this board have, but I, I could not go and say it, because if we did that, then we'd have to support those on the other side, you know, and it's, and it's taxpayer money, and the decisions are tough enough, we have to make on expenditure, there's services in our county. And I respect this organization, they work hard, they stuck with it, and, but to come and ask this Board of Commissioners, you know, if in fact they're asking for monetary funds, is something that I would, I would have a hard time doing, for the reasons I've said, to commit taxpayer money to support one side of an issue. So, that's, that's my stance, and the other board members may have their own, but it comes up, and they want to have a vote on it, I'll vote.
Let us support it, would be...
I can do that if it ends up...
Yeah, you can do that if...
And I, and I have. Thank you.
All right, if I go to either, so...
Yeah.
Next, we'll provide the board an update on the recycling program. Currently, we're still waiting on big power to hook the power up to Sars Creek site. The shed is there, everything's ready to go, we just need to get that power hooked up. East Buffalo is up and running, and as well as, of course, you know, we have the one at, in town here. A few weeks ago, at the recycling board meeting, there was, a lot of the discussion revolved around how do we proceed to maximize our efforts and to minimize some of the destruction that we've seen at some of the sites. Director, supervisor sanitation Donnie's got photos where folks are just, you know, they're vacuuming the dumpsters and they're shoving them all together. There's a substantial amount of trash, large pieces of furniture, mattresses, and things like that, that are winding up at other facilities that don't have any personnel there. And the dumpsters are basically torn, really, you were at that meeting, we had those discussions. The recycling board, you know, as, as we sit there and we discuss this, there's only a few options that you have to deal with it. You either try to man every site, which is not an option, we don't have the budget to do that. You put cameras up at every site, so that you can monitor, but you know, who knows how long that's gonna last. The other idea is to, do you reduce the amount of sites to a more manageable, you know, where you can staff those sites. There's gonna have to be more discussion going forward from the board, between the recycling board and the Board of Commissioners, to be able to try to find a solution to the trash problem that we have, and it's, it's not the good people of Grand County, you know, there's, there's a few people who go in there, and I think Lisa can attest to this, she's been there, and they just destroy the site, and our guys spend hours cleaning this up.
Okay, I'd like to make comment to that. Lisa and I, Commissioner Holder, and of course, you know, others from the county participate, and they did come up with a list of recommendations, and I'm working on those, and Greg, we've seen those from our last meetings last week, about coming up with a determination, you know, when it comes down to the findings, how much it's costing the people of Grand County to take care of garbage. I always watched in amazement about Chicago, how important, you're getting people's garbage out, and you know, water, sewer, and everything else is very, very important, but those recommendations cover the things that Commissioner, that Manager Cable has spoken of, and one of the things, and I'll tell you where this Commissioner stands in that line, eventually down the road, we're gonna have to have all the sites manned, and those manned sites are gonna be to the point where those that we have manned are not gonna be as many as we have. They need to be done in a way where the demographics that we learned, we're talking about closing the site on Bear Creek, there has to be a demographic study done on the most feasible place to have those, and where those need to be, you know, we want to have those there, and they're gonna be monitored by you and me, and they're gonna be locked when they're not open. And in that, the discussion was about talking to vendors already about cameras, and you know, they'll shoot the cameras out, they'll bag it, get points for it, put it on the hood of their car, drive it around the courthouse. But the point of the matter of it is, that's a destructive idea, but what needs to be is that in order to take care of the garbage, we need to have an assessment of how much it's costing us right now, and if I'm mistaken, I'm mistaken, two mills out of .44 goes to take the garbage out of Grand County. It's in its infancy right now, and the recycling efforts with one site open has been up to around 90 to 100 pounds that we did not have to pay to have disposed of in Georgia, and we did not have to go and make an additional trip and staff and everything else to have it done. Yes, it is showing up right now, perhaps we're not gonna break even with it, but I had a very wise poor clerk tell me, we're never gonna make money on garbage. All we can do is reduce the amount that the people of Grand County have to pay to dispose of it. So, I, I'm going to be having a look at that personally, and Commissioner Holder, any of the other commissioners that we want to participate there, but we're on that committee, and it's an active committee, and they have some good ideas, and it's not a very popular thing, some of these sites are gonna have to be closed, and then we're gonna have to come up a way to man those, and we need to take everything we can about doing the recycling efforts. My own dad, who is 82 years old, he had, he was against it, because he thought he's gonna have to separate everything, plastic, glass, this, that, and the other. I said, "No, Dad, it's single string. If it's on this list and this pamphlet, put it in a separate day." And I'm just gonna go ahead and tell you, folks, my household of three, it has cut the garbage, household garbage down to about half, and the rest of it is recyclable, and it's going, and it's gonna make a benefit, you know, to getting money back, and we're not having to take it all the way to Georgia, we take it to action. So, I'm a proponent for it, I'll just stand right on it. We're gonna have to have some public hearings about it, those, I understand we don't have to, but we want to have input on it, and Greg, they're gonna be asking you to come in with some analysis on how it costs, with you and Donnie Ward, about how much it's costing the taxpayers, and I want some taxpayer to say to me that it's not more feasible to do it this way, at less expense, than it is to go and just, just run rampant, just throw it all over the place. People say, "Well, they're gonna throw it on the roadside." Well, about 70% of this county belongs to U.S. government, let them prosecute. If we find out who they are, then let's set a limit, as one of the board members said, "Don't go say that it's $500. Say it starts at $1,000, it goes up. Have these folks out there in work detail picking up the garbage. Have something, but be consistent in it, have it work. It's not me and me. It's not me and me. It's just somehow or the other, we're gonna have to work together and, and get this problem in hand, or, you know, it's just gonna continue the way that it's going." That's all I'll say. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Next on the list is the senior center, HCPG, 2013, 14.
That funding got approved, I'll be just...
That's the, that's not the 225.
No.
Next is the CPG award for $225,000, that's for the scattered site housing granted, that the funding came through from the state. And you have that information. The board had in previous meetings approved the request this, and I guess the vendors would be able to. Next on the list is, we have the request again this year, the summer campaigns for school. They're requesting the same price for the pool as they did last year, and I'm gonna say this to the two.
I think they discounted it a little.
Okay.
Two did last year.
And two certified authorities.
Which we always have.
Which we always have there. And, there's a work line, it's mentioned on this, and that'll be an action item, right?
That's in the action.
For, I think that's a pass and all, and that's with the senior building. Yes, sir. Next on the, I have, this newer old business, I have just a couple of pieces to do. Number one, from Missy Henry in Communications, they have requests, Misty has requested that her and Tabby be able to attend a quality assurance course, offer my EMD, Ferrari Dispatch, the closest classes available on June 3rd, November 5th. The cost of that class is, is $1,100, and of course, there'll be other expenses for motel and food. They are requesting that the board allow them, out of 911 funds, to be able to, to take this class. And last thing on the list is, I've got copies of, I finally got back from Donnie Saro at Office of State Personnel on County Paying. He has approved it, and now I've got this report to review, and you can compare it to the plan that you represented last time, there's really no changes. What he did was, as far as Office of State Personnel, in some of those cases, they just wanted, they wanted the classifications to match up as similarly as possible with the state, and so, I got a whole new education on how the state uses it, and how we go do it, and how we had to shuffle that around. A lot, in a lot of cases, it was fine, but there's, I've got copies for the board members of the pay scale and the highlighted section of that, or Office of State Personnel, personnel within the county, and their salary grade, and the ranges that they, that they fall into. So, I've got it, so I'll pass it on.
So, will that reflect changes according to the state personnel?
The ranges, yes, sir. The ranges are, have been adjusted to what the Office of State Personnel would approve for those positions that follow.
Okay. But we sent those locally, right? I mean, we, we had some decisions about it.
No, it doesn't really have anything to do with the actual pay.
Okay.
It has more to do with the, the steps between the grades.
Okay.
You see what I'm saying? So, that's where, yeah, no, it didn't have anything to do with what actual rate of pay we sent.
Okay.
But, you know, it's just the way that they filter out the grades is, it's approved for the first time, so we've got that.
What about Sheriff's Bureau, Greg, old business?
Old business, I talked last Monday, Monday before last, last Monday before I left Chapel Hill, I had called Eric Sneak at King Board, who got bid for the sheriff vehicles, and he told me that he had one cruiser in, and he was still waiting on two more in the sheriff's truck now. I don't know.
You're behind. We've got two, we paid for two, they're going for strapping, and then we're lacking one cruiser and one. So, we've not even had a chance to speak today, I've been in there, and one truck for the sheriff's vehicle. That's what we're waiting on right now.
One car, one truck.
One car, one truck.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's the other thing since I was going on.
And I do have two items of new business if I may.
Sure.
Okay. And the Grand County Schools have to present their budget to the board by April the 2nd, which I have late copies of that on here.
April 2nd?
Yeah, and, well, May 2nd, he had a typo too. And so, they have gotten it to us, I have it on the dashboard review, of course, that will go into the, for budget discussion when we begin those. We did discuss in the workshop session today to cancel our budget workshop meetings that we had scheduled for next week till the week after, due to my son's surgery, I need to take care of him next week, and Becky and Greg are, because of Greg's schooling, it's not quite ready for the budget sessions to begin, so we, I just wanted to throw that out. And the last item that I had was my county insurance. I had put that out to bid, and what I had done is send it to, for our local businesses. I was informed that two local businesses in the county, or two companies are competitive municipalities and counties too. So, my local agent that already has our insurance now was using that one company, that left one more company, and the other vendors outside of Grand County wanted to use that company. I chose to use the two companies in Grand County. I hope I didn't overstep, but we have always said, "Keep it local," so I chose those two companies to go against, to bid for the commercial liability, workers comp, our recreation coverage, anything on that end. Health insurance, I mean, went up 2%. I recommend we do not bid that out. 15, 20% raises everywhere else due to Obamacare, and I do have that in a letter in your packages from the state of North Carolina, I think the NCACC had actually sent us something there. We're not gonna beat that rate. And I'm not trying to, I, I don't want it to get out that I'm attempting to award any type of coverage to anybody else, but I can bring it, present it to you, we're getting the best coverage, the best agent that is taking care of us, I don't have to deal with it myself, which is always a plus, at a 2% increase, and we will discuss this in budget about the 2% increase, if you want to take some direction there, but I felt like that we should not bid out our health insurance, and I was hoping that y'all would agree with that tonight.
I, I will put an end to that. You and I had some discussion about this early on before it came up.
Yes.
Now, that 2% would be a wash in this county because of those folks.
Uh huh.
We get a 2% reduction in what the taxpayers are in county today.
It was 4% was it?
We get a whole, whole total of combination of credits, and we have the wellness too. We lack a little from participations from some of our county employees. I'm gonna really push when we go for renewal, everybody has to do their wellness check, and I do it with great love, and I'll help them out all I can, but, you know, for that 2%, I'll fight for it. So, I want 100% participation the next time, and of course, I was gonna bring that all up to the budget, and, you know, everybody's been real good, but I didn't realize the seriousness of it, and I saw that we did not make the margin, and I will push harder this year. and I will push harder this year.
Anything else? Thank you, Ms. Clerk. On the May second deadline, the school budget that's in place, we have that. And we, I know that we've had a good dialogue with the school system between our funding partners. And I'm thankful for that. And hopefully, this will be the beginning of something great. That we'll be able to fast forward on the process of budget. All right, with that, is there any other new or old business? If not, Ms. Clerk, we need to go through the action items. And I believe there'll be several of those. Please keep me on the task here. First of all, with the discoveries and releases, I do not have a total sheet. Thank you very much. All right, this time, we have total discoveries, an amount of six thousand four hundred twenty-seven dollars and eight cents. Total releases, an amount of one thousand sixty-eight dollars and eighty-six cents.
Right motion.
Have a motion to be accepted, these releases and discoveries presented. Have a second. Anyone have any conversation about it? All approve, signify with a hand. All opposed, white sign. I'd like to mention with this, is that with the, we're doing locally the reevaluations, and there've been discovery of several properties that are yet to be reflected in it. Some folks have actually had things there improperly that they did not list. All right, so with that, the next item that we have are action items for the approval of a poll of Senior Center Site Change One on March twenty-first, two thousand thirteen, an amount of twenty-two hundred and seventy dollars. Polls onsite change also on April sixteenth, two thousand thirteen, for seven thousand dollars. We did a poll, you know how this board feels about polls, but this was very necessary in the time that we had. The site for the senior citizens building needed to be moved over, as reflected in the meeting that we had with the committee, the Senior Citizen Building Committee. And we approved those site changes so that the board could move forward. So we'll need an approval for the poll that was taken on these two dates, March twenty-first and on April sixteenth. We have a motion.
Motion.
Have a motion. We have a second. We have a second. All right, any discussion or questions? All approve, signify with a hand. All opposed, white sign. All right, the relay for live request. Do we have a motion to the contribution be in kind? Or we're gonna make monetary?
Motion, my permission.
Okay, the in-time contribution. All right, is that understood? Everybody, the motion is made, we have in time, removing bleachers, site preparation and cleanup for the relay to the line. Have a form of motion, we have a second?
Have it.
Have a second. Any discussion or comment? All approve, signify with a hand. All opposed, white sign. All right, the approval of the HCCBG grant provision for county-based aging services. Have a motion.
Seven.
Have a motion. Do we have a second? We have a second. Any discussion? All approve. All opposed. All right, next item that I have listed here is for the Verizon Wireless. It's an amount of eighteen thousand dollars for the next year on wireless service for the county. Have a motion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion or comment? All approve. All opposed. Thank you. The electronic medical records for the health department is presented. It's presented in the plans by our director, and taking advantage of the incentive program. Do we have a motion?
We already did that.
I already did that. Second, I'll check. And the next one, too, no, contract.
Yeah.
The manager architect. Thank you. Next one is tobacco-free parks. Parks and Recreation departments make these areas tobacco-free. Do we have a motion?
Does that affect our health anyway?
No.
It shouldn't just be up here. It's not on campus. I mean, I don't see why it would. I don't think within directly, on these.
That smoke that we checked in the vice gear, and they've got some noble that they quit before it happens.
In the insurance.
In the insurance. Why not? It's got a smoke area in that.
It's healthy, isn't it?
They got noble that they quit before that team.
Okay, again, is this gonna fail for lack of motion? This is for tobacco-free parks and recreation areas.
Which you did point out would affect us in grants later on.
Later down the road.
I'll make a motion.
Do we have a motion?
Sure, but if I can.
Do we have a second? Fail us for a second. I need to find out the, if I could second that motion. Go to the, all right, CTG project.
Seven.
Thank you. Summer camp fees for the school.
Same as last year.
Right. Is that the one? Do we have that with the live cards? Do we have a motion and a second? All approve. All opposed. Approve the Senior Center, HCCBG, for two thousand thirteen, fourteen.
I believe I've typed that twice. I do apologize.
Yes, thank you very much. All the alphabet confused. All right, with this now, too, we have this with the water line.
Thousand dollars for water lines to Williams Construction.
Okay, I'd like to give explanation there, everybody. During our work session, or before our work session today at three o'clock, the senior citizens of the building committee, men with the architect dead with us, and others then, with this about getting the infrastructure, I believe, Mr. Hyatt said that with this completion on the water line, which is going under a road, they're gonna have to cut the road out and do the asphalt, cover it back over. We've got a price today of a thousand dollars to get this done. So we need to have those changed. And we ask the board to approve that thousand dollar charge. Have a motion. We have a second. All right, any discussion? All approve, signify with a hand. All opposed, white sign. Ms. Clerk?
Okay, the outside of the senior buildings, as we are discussing that, we had brought it in the workshop session, why not, it was in the senior citizens committee. Recommendation by the committee is to go with a rock. This is what it's going to look like. I think there's a bigger picture here. We need approval of the, that you approve the outside look. And then do you want to go with stack rock, or with rock?
Stack rock, or stackel rock, or what's called culture stone?
I think we need to keep it similar to the trace, building that place.
I believe that's what.
So that's a stack rock.
There's a difference in cops.
Yeah.
With the, and, you know, with, as far as everything is concerned, obviously, you know, aesthetically, it's gonna look a lot better with the rock on there. We probably need to get an action from the board to see, have anyone to say, do you wanna say Ohio? I don't know. Do you want to proceed definitely with this, so you can see what the cost is?
I'm gonna say today, no, a thousand dollars.
Yeah. I think, you know, we, we, I'm like, a thousand dollars for stack rock. Over the culture, so. Right. So, you know, and I made a good point, you know, Pete and I have participated in the meeting. And it was pretty much unanimous, and go with stacks, um, and it's for the same reason that Commissioner Morris mentioned, is that it matches up with the facility already there, transportation facility.
My knowledge only go away from that.
With the design and the stack.
Now, this, this motion is for the design and the stacked stone, at those price changes. Now, we need to understand, it's one cost more, per square foot than it does otherwise. Okay, we have a motion, we have a second? Are any discussion? All approve, signify with a hand. All opposed, white sign. Ms. Clerk?
Acceptance of the CDVG funds in the amount of two hundred and twenty-five thousand. I think we had, we discussed it, we did make the motion to accept.
So.
We applied for it. It's all of the effort you have to, every step you take. I think we did.
Yeah, you're right. It was one of the discussion items, yeah. All right, we have a motion, we go ahead and accept the CDVG award of two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for scattered site housing. Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Okay, any discussion? All approve, signify with a hand. All opposed, white sign.
Action on the senior meals to June thirty, twenty thirteen, we had a twelve thousand six hundred twenty-five dollars and sixty cents, which would be a little bit less, I believe. Am I correct in one day? We had figured on the sixty-five days left remaining, so it'd be just a little bit under that.
Motion. Okay, we got funds, we got funding for this? We do?
We've got some, a little bit more in management expansion than what we thought, so that would.
All right, we have, we have a motion for the senior meals.
Second.
Have a second? Need further discussion? All approve, signify with a hand. All opposed, white sign. Great.
Board of Health taking over the Hilltop Advisory Board.
We actually, we have action on that. You know, I've already made that motion, and the board has done that. So that's actually a more helpful point, a proper point.
Yeah, it is. In other words, it's moving over. And I understand that, Felicia, I'm probably part of the problem. I just can't get there.
That's fine, y'all, but who's the sport if you want to, they have to act.
All right, so that was informational then. That was informational then, under the advisory board deciding to take it my way.
Right. I know Greg's gonna be involved, anything we do for medical stuff. So I can promise you, Pete and anybody are definitely gonna be involved. We keep them very well informed. It was just 'cause what Greg said, we couldn't keep them informed. Could not, I mean, we not had one in three quarters.
We'll see.
So we decided that to make sure we got to do action when action was needed, we put it back into the board of health and let them do the action.
All right.
But Pete, I promise, they will be informed anytime we get anything or make any progress.
We as a board have to dissolve this Hilltop Advisory Board that was set up under county commissioners, though. I wasn't saying that they couldn't appoint. We have to dissolve the one that we have in place.
So this is pretty much be approved, or this dissolution?
The advisory board was appointed by the board of health.
Yeah.
I thought it was appointed by the commissioners.
No, it's appointed by the board of health. Y'all appointed a commissioner representative of them.
Yeah, that's right. That's partly that.
Okay.
And if that.
It's all on, so have the details.
Okay. We'll find out if it's not right.
Yeah, that's fine. I just, I was just under the impression, it's on my calendar, it was listed, that it was, that we had done it. But that's fine.
Okay.
Travel, permission for Andy to travel to Raleigh, made attempt to accept the grant, party grant.
Hey, wait a minute. We know we got it.
Yeah.
Well, it's all but said, you know, the.
In the end, it was the funding.
But you have to be there. They're not gonna tell you before you get to Raleigh. And you have to show up to be there.
They've done that.
So you know what he's talking about.
It's happened to me with them.
I do, me too. I've actually drove to Raleigh, or to our meeting, and turned around and followed with that more than once. Okay, and I'm, we're gonna have a motion to approve travel for.
All signs indicate this is gonna be a very.
I hope it's great, too. Good. We have a motion, have a second? Any discussion? All approve? Okay, thank you very much.
And the last one is permission for Misty and Tabby with nine-one-one to travel to a class that is going to be paid in total by nine-one-one funds.
I like that nine-one-one fund. Have a motion, second? Okay, all approve. All opposed. Okay. All right, let's take an assessment. Is that everything, Ms. Clerk?
I can share, maybe, so much as thinking we got it.
Okay. All right, folks, we have completed the agenda for open session. I need a motion, we go on our, into a closed session under GS one forty-three, that's three eighteen to eleven. A one three six for privilege or confidential information, attorney, client, privilege, personnel, contracts. With a five-minute recess. Have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Okay, all approve? Okay, we're going to close in five minutes.